We have six fifty-six right now.
I'm recording.
And we're edit.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's what I thought was best. We're gonna let the citizens in in one minute. Just want all council to, if you can unmute yourself. I just wanna make sure we got everything working. Thank you. Thank you.
Pat Palin.
Councilman Palin, if you could unmute yourself.
You may have walked off for a moment.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm ready to let everybody in.
I'm muting myself. I'm muting myself. Wait, give them one more minute. Because you know the time is a little different.
Yeah, it's true. Okay.
Let them in at six fifty-nine and it'll be six fifty-eight. You can't hear us? You can't hear us? Okay.
No, I can't speak. I couldn't unmute myself.
Okay.
That's what I'm worried about, Councilman Palin.
I've asked him to unmute several times.
Okay. All right, I'm letting everybody in.
Fantastic.
I'm letting citizens in right now.
Hold on, have you muted everyone else? Hold on one second. Yeah, good.
Mayor, whenever you're ready, we're good to go.
It's six fifty-eight.
Right.
Give me one second, Erica.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon. Today is Monday, August the twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, and I now call to order the Fairbrenne City Council. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
The Honorable Mayor Elizabeth Carhurst.
Present.
The Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Ulysses J. Smallwood.
Present.
The Honorable Linda J. Davis.
Present.
The Honorable Councilman Heath.
Present.
The Honorable Hattie Portis Jones.
Present.
The Honorable James Whitmore.
Present.
Madam Mayor, the attendance of council constitutes a quorum. Please allow the meeting to continue.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. We will now have invocation by Councilman Alex Heath.
Everyone of will bow their heads, please. Father, we come to you at this time in our history, and we pray, dear Lord, for a healing of our country, of all the strife and everything that has taken place, the COVID-nineteen virus that is here, dear God, we just pray in your holy name that they would be healed. They say in the scripture that, "If my people that are called by my name will fall down and worship me, I will heal their land." Father, we just thank you right now that that's, that that would be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 The next item on the agenda is the adoption of the city council minutes for August the tenth. All council members, you should have received these minutes in your council package for this week. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the minutes of August tenth, two thousand and twenty?
So moved, Mayor. Councilman Heath.
Second Mayor Pro Tem.
Second Councilman Whitmore.
A motion has been made by Councilman Heath and seconded by Councilman Whitmore. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Yes, Mayor. Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Yes. In the first sentence, I ask that you precede a federal policy council with Georgia Municipal Association, because it is a subcommittee under GMA. I also ask that the minutes reflect my request that expenses to date of COVID-nineteen were to be included in a letter to Senators Perdue and Loeffler, and that the mayor stated that she would provide that, the data and the letter, to each council member to submit to the senators. She also stated that she would give me a call. To date, I have not received a call, a text message, email, or the said letter that was promised. Secondly, the minutes relative to the conversation with Councilman Whitmore regarding an email that he received from Safeguard, where he stated that Safeguard alleged some erroneous things in the email, and that he committed to share that email with mayor and council, and to date, I have not received that email. Thank you.
Councilwoman Portis Jones, are you making, are you making additions, corrections to the minutes, or are you making statements?
Those were all statements that were said at the meeting of August tenth, and I am asking that those be included in the written minutes. They are in the recorded minutes. I'm just asking that they be made in the written minutes.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, she's asking that her comments are included in these minutes of August the tenth.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Your comments are so noted. We have a motion on the floor in a second. With those changes, are those corrections, are those additions being added to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The minutes are approved six-zero.
With corrections. Okay.
With the corrections. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is going to be the adoption of the city council agenda for tonight. The first item is a discussion. Well, actually, we have two discussions tonight. One is Duncan Park, and the other one is the Dog Park update. Both of these discussions will be led by our Parks and Recreation Director, who's Mr. John Culbright. The second agenda item is from the Police Department, and I'm going to ask that this item, which is for mayor and council to approve, the updated ordinance regulating court services, is tabled for the next ninety days in order to give our city attorney and also our judge time to meet on this particular subject. And so I'll come back to that particular item. The next item on the agenda is from planning and zoning to Reka Peaks for mayor and council to approve the executive execution of the sub-grant agreement with the Loud Regional Commission for the Louisville Community Initiative, Fair and Downtown Master Plan in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And the last two items on the agenda tonight is under community development, Mr. Lester Thompson. The first one is for mayor and council to approve the Malone Street curb and gutter installation and project contract award in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred. And the last agenda item is for mayor and council to approve the change order for the Howell Avenue Extension Project in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. With that being said, I would like to ask that council table item number one is under the Police Department for ninety days for additional discussion with Judge Ewing and our attorney Turner and other staff.
May I comment?
Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you so much for doing that, because I had some concerns in reference to this, and that was actually gonna be my suggestion that it's postponed or tabled. So thank you so much.
You're very welcome. May I have a motion on the floor? We'll start with the tabling of item number one. Is there a motion to table item number one for the next ninety days for mayor and council to approve the updated ordinance regulating court services? So let me get a motion on the floor to table this for the next ninety days in a second, please.
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Smallwood.
Second, Councilwoman Davis.
Okay, motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Smallwood and seconded by Councilwoman Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Item number one will be tabled for the next ninety days. Item number two, item number three, and item number four, may I have a motion on the floor to approve these agenda items for tonight?
So moved, Councilwoman Davis.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Davis and seconded by Councilman Whitmore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Our agenda tonight will start with item number six, which is a discussion. Duncan Park, Mr. John Culbright, are you on the line, please?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd just like to make a few opening statements regarding the closing of Duncan Park. Duncan Park, as we all know, was closed due to the COVID-nineteen virus issue. And we have been keeping track of those issues as it relates to the closing of the park. Two things that I would like to present, I'd like to present a Plan A. The Plan A will say, will say, keep Duncan Park closed based upon the spiking of the virus on the profile that we put in your package that has Fairbrenne at a high level. Have on August the nineteenth, three hundred and sixty count. And then I have another one on August the twenty-first, the count was three sixty-nine. That's, those are day rates of the COVID diagnosis. And the reason we would like to probably keep the park where it is at this point, at this time, is because we want to be in line with the other parks in the city of South Fulton. If I look at the parks in the city of South Fulton, Union City Parks and gyms are closed. South Fulton Parks and Pools are closed. Hayville Gyms is, parks are closed with the exception of a weight room and a pickleball by appointment only. If we look at a broader area, city of Atlanta, no large gathering, no teams, recreation centers are closed, indoor pools are open only by appointment for lap swimming only. Palmeira Parks Ballfields closed, and some of the Union City Parks are closed. The only other open parks, Fayette County has, have their parks open. Reservations are available for people, up to fifty people. Peachtree City Gyms are open, their pool is open, all their playgrounds are open, but the splash pads are closed. But that's just a quick profile of the parks and how they are closed in the area and what's open. And if we open our park, we're gonna get the people from the other parks in the region who, where they are closed. Duncan will be inundated, I think, with numbers as it was when we first closed the park down. That's my Plan A. Plan B would be to have a opening of the park only for walking only. But one of the things and some of the challenges we have with that, and I'll have Mr. Harvey Stokes speak to some of that, restroom sanitizing, distance monitoring, and there's no way we can prohibit non-walkers or participants from entering the park once we open the park and take the barricades down. Duncan Park has over five hundred parking spaces. Some people might say, I don't wanna exercise, I just wanna drive my car in the park and sit and, 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 and look at the lake, for example. But those are my suggestions tonight, and I'll entertain any questions that the mayor and council members may have or suggestions. Thank you.
Okay, council members, the floor is open for discussion on Duncan Park. He's given us option A and option B. The floor is open for discussion.
This is Mayor Pro Tem Smallwood. I'll just say that I'm in agreement with the option A that he presented, presenting all the data and, you know, well, looking at all the data, I'm with option A. Just wanna make that comment.
Thank you, sir. Whitmore. This is Councilman Whitmore, and I concur with my colleague, Mayor Pro Tem.
Is there any other council members who would like to have a discussion on Duncan Park, option A and option B?
Councilwoman Davis.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to, I think Director Culbright said that Director Stokes is gonna speak about the bathrooms. I would like to hear that first before I make comments on Plan B.
Mr. Stokes, are you on the line?
Yes, I am, Mayor.
Okay.
The, the problem with the restroom, if we do go with option B, would be to make sure they're sanitized. As I said before, we, we do not have the staff in to take on that responsibility to make sure that those restrooms are sanitized once they have been used.
I'm sorry, you said we do have?
We do not. Do not. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then I would go with option A with my colleagues.
Are there any other council members who have any other comments concerning Duncan Park? Okay. We, it was, this is just for discussion tonight, so council does not have to vote on it. I see that Randy Turner just, just showed up. Our attorney is, is, is with us tonight. Welcome, Randy. So there are no other comments concerning the Duncan Park and the reopening with option A or option B?
Mayor, I do have a question in reference to the listing that Director Culbright has down here in reference to what's closed and what's opened. And he has youth, the youth center closed until schools open. Well, schools are open. Does that mean that the youth center is open, or what?
The youth center is open for staff. We have not officially and formally, that was gonna be a recommended suggestion that if the schools open and we have participants coming in, in, in after-school program, for example, we would have the youth center open. But at the current time presently, I don't believe it's, there's a program in place at, at this time. That's, that's when I said schools were open, I was talking about the youth at the mental fitness program. That's what I was referring to.
Oh, okay.
If I may.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
If I may add, the after-school program is a virtual after-school program, so no kids will be coming into the youth center under the STEAM program.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Does that answer your question, Councilwoman Davis?
Yes, it does. And I also wanna say to Director Culbright that I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea, idea that we have, we use Avery Park for the seniors as a walk-in station. I just wanted to know, will there be specific times for that to start or to end? And will we have to utilize any type of police monitoring or anything like that?
For Avery Park?
Yes.
If, if we're talking about Avery Park, I think we're speaking mainly about the residents of the manor. We have been engaging with the residents of the manor on behalf of the mayor and council with a food-feeding program. But the manor itself is on a somewhat semi-lockdown of its participants, where no one can enter the building from the outside. The park is open for them to use on their own, but we have not formalized a, a recreation fitness program with them. That's one of my goals, to work with them on these feeding programs, and then once the pandemic issues begin to lift, we will automatically channel them into organized recreational programs for fitness.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Culbright and, and Mr. Stokes. Okay. Randy, you wanna say hello?
Hello, I just got hooked in, finally.
Yeah. Hello.
Been quite a day.
Yes. So now, we'll also have an update. So the, the park will remain, there's not, we're not voting on this tonight, just having a general discussion. So Duncan Park will remain closed, and that also includes walking in the park.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Next, let's have the Dog Park update.
On the Dog Park update, Mayor and council, we instituted a survey on the city of Fairbrenne's website. We got back a total of, I believe, about eighty-five surveys and the various comments that they made on whether they had a, a dog or not, and where they participated in walking their dogs. And that survey gave us some, some data. But one of the things I would like to, to speak to regarding the Dog Park tonight on is the fact that dog parks are closed as well because of COVID-nineteen impact. They are closed as well, and I have given deep and serious thought to the Dog Park, and I'm, I'm running into some issues in my mind in terms of where we can implement the Dog Park in an adequate manner. One of the things earlier suggested was Duncan Park. Right now, in, in my mind and in my professional analysis, I think what we need for Duncan Park at this point is sort of a, an update on the master plan. I don't wanna go and put a Dog Park in Duncan Park, and we have not really looked at the entire picture of the park for the future, because we've gotta look at the park in its entirety. So I think, and another idea I have, and I have broached this idea with the donor who won, who has donated funds for the Dog Park, is that we work with them on finding a, a private piece of land possibly and put, and institute a private management and oversight, a nonprofit of some type, that will help manage the Dog Park. And that way, we won't have the budgetary impact on the city of Fairbrenne's financial resources. Because one thing that has to be thought through, and I'll bring Mr. Harvey in again, is the fact that this is an ongoing maintenance requirement that's gonna, if the Dog Park is implemented within the city's park system, it's gonna have an impact on our budget. The costs for implementation still need to be worked out, once the location is found, and also the ongoing maintenance cost. So at this time, what I'd like to recommend is, only recommendation, is that the Dog Park be put on hold for the time being, and that we look at doing some real good planning over the next year or two in, in terms of how and where this Dog Park can be placed within the city's system.
Okay, Mr. Stokes, did you have anything to add to the comments by Mr. Culbright?
No, I, I support what Mr. Culbright is saying. There are some serious things that need to be taken into consideration, the location, even down to the guidelines themselves. We, we need to make sure that each one of these dogs that entered this park are up-to-date vaccinated to protect the public and the whole nine yards. I agree with Mr. Culbright.
Okay. Council members, the floor is open for general discussion on the Dog Park. Do we have any comments from council members?
Yes, this is Councilman Whitmore. So I, I like the idea of a master plan. Number one, we have potentially two things that we're looking at in the near future or the far future for the park. Number one is that access road coming off of Beryl and B. Smith, and the other is the community center that we have talked about, but COVID-nineteen has even slowed down the drawings for that. So I think it is important to know exactly where things are gonna be going within, in the park before we make that decision. But I also like the other idea that the director had about finding a private lot and moving forward with those advances as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mayor, Councilman Heath. Ms. Mullins brought this to us. She is, has a medical condition that I think really waited a year or two, that may not be good for her. Like, and she would like to see some type of something. I mean, we could always move the Dog Park if that was a problem to another property, but, but right now, with the monies that she is paying, I would like to see something done before a year, to be, to be honest with you. Simply because of, of the condition that, that she has. So I would be more, more inclined, and I do know that you've got, you've got to, you know, have a plan in place and stuff like that, but like I say, I heard him say up to two years. Well, I mean, two years is a long time. A lot of things can happen, as we have seen with our interchange with I-85 and 74 Highway. So I, I just would, you know, within a year's time, I think that something needs to be done. And, and that's, that's all I'm gonna voice on that.
Does any other council members have any other comments? Concerning the Dog Park?
I just wanna ask, I think I heard Mr. Culbright say, did, did you talk with the donor about the plans? Did I hear you say that, Mr. Culbright?
Yes, I did speak to Ms. Mullins. Yes, I did speak to uh Ms. Mullins uh in in uh not in terms of the timeframe, but I did speak with her in terms of alternatives. I spoke with her in terms of a nonprofit organization uh sort of have an oversight over the dog park and that it be fee-based uh by that nonprofit and that land could be identified uh and that and I I believe in that way they will have more freedom to uh develop the park uh the way uh they want to. But right now, in terms of the city's uh 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 priorities and finances, I can't speak to all of them. But just in terms of the park, I would like to say that I I don't think we are prepared uh to do it at this time.
I got you. Thank you.
And and um, Mr. Colbert, what was Ms. Mullins' response to that information you shared with her?
Well, she said that, well, um, two things. She said, if I'm not around, uh, I will leave something uh, but this is sensitive, in 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 my will for it to be done. Uh, and she said that uh if more money was needed, she would need to know that too and she would uh perform that accordingly within her uh personals.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, council members, does anyone else have any comments to make concerning the uh dog park update? Um, uh, it's my suggestion that we uh, this is a very sensitive uh issue and the City of Fairburn is still holding a check. And uh at some point, we're we're either going to have to return the check to her because it's going to be uh date stale. Um, or make a decision on on which way we're going. I think we've had this check now well over, what, six, eight months? Um, is in is we have it here in the safe here and in the city uh in City Hall, but uh we're going to have to make some decisions. So uh, Mr. Colbert, uh, I would suggest that um I know you've done your research uh as far as uh looking for a private lot or uh private investors uh to uh to help us. Um, Mr. Stokes, I think you gave us a suggestion on something that Peachtree City did with their dog park. Uh, they went private.
Yes.
They uh so they're they're told, that park is totally handled by uh 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 private uh investors. Is that correct?
That is correct.
How many do does Peachtree City have?
Parks.
Uh, dog parks.
We have one park is is designed for large and smaller dogs.
Okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Colbert, have you gotten with uh uh Tariqa uh and Lester? Uh, because I have not had a meeting with you all yet concerning the master plan. Uh, so we can look at it and see uh what we can possibly do there that's not going to interfere with that plan for the park in the future.
Uh, no, ma'am, but I I will get with uh her. I talk, I plan on bringing that up when we talk about the comp plan.
Okay, okay, okay. So it's going to be my suggestion that uh within the next couple of weeks that we sit down and we have a meeting uh uh with Tariqa uh concerning the uh master plan. And we also need to put uh Lester and Harvey in that meeting too. Uh, if we can look at private investors, uh, we know anyone uh tag on Peachtree City. We can, but at some point, very soon, we're going to have to make some kind of decision. Um, either to uh return the funds to her or figure out what we're going to do uh to honor her uh in some way with a dog uh park or something in Duncan Park if we can do something at a later date. Uh, but, you know, I don't want to deposit a check when we don't know which way we're going.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so can we agree to uh set up a meeting in the next week or so and try to uh figure out a master plan and do some further research so we can come back with council with something concrete so that they can make a decision on uh what we're going to do with this funding?
Yes, ma'am.
More money, then we need to talk to her about uh additional funding now.
Yes, ma'am. We'll we'll schedule that meeting, Mayor.
Okay, does any other council members have any other uh comments or suggestions uh regarding the update on the dog park? Okay, we're going to go to the next item on the agenda and that's going to be item number two. Uh, Ms. Peaks, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Mayor.
Uh, the next agenda item is for mayor and council to approve the execution of the sub grant agreement with Atlanta Regional Commission for the livable centers initiative Fairburn Downtown Master Plan in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
On February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, the planning is on and office submitted a grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission's Livable Centers Initiative Twenty-Twenty Call for Planning Studies. The application to ARC requested assistance with performing a major update to the downtown master plan. The downtown master plan will provide a blueprint for creating a vibrant, walkable, economically thriving downtown center. Specifically, the downtown master plan will help address the following needs in downtown. An increase in residential density, additional parking, improved curb appeal and cohesive architectural building style and character, including consistent signage style, redevelopment of key areas in downtown such as Hudson Plaza, and a clearly defined vision, goals, objectives, and implementation strategies. On May fifteenth of twenty-twenty, ARC announced that they had awarded one point four million dollars in LCI grants to fund planning studies in ten metro Atlanta communities and the City of Fairburn was one of the ten applications selected. Tonight, staff is requesting for mayor and council to approve the execution of the sub grant agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission for the LCI Downtown Master Plan. The total budget of the master plan is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The grant is eighty percent reimbursable by ARC. Therefore, the city's financial obligation is twenty-five thousand dollars. The a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars has been included in the twenty-twenty-twenty-one budget in the Fund Two-Fifty Grant lineup line allocation. And again, staff is asking for approval of the execution of the sub grant agreement with ARC for the LCI Downtown Master Plan.
Okay, council, you have before you the for mayor and council to approve the execution of the sub grant agreement with uh ARC and livable communities in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, uh, before we vote on this, is there any comments from uh council?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Portis Jones first and then Councilwoman Linda Davis.
Uh, thank you so much, Mayor. Um, congratulations, Ms. Peaks, on uh receiving the award. That is just super, super fantastic. Uh, my question to you, though, is um as we are developing in the various areas, are we taking into consideration broadband needs? And if so, is that included in this or is that additional or how do we get that incorporated?
Actually, the broadband concept has just been added to the comprehensive plan um as of last year. So broadband should be and will be addressed in the five-year update. We haven't actually gotten to that part yet in the um process with the Atlanta Regional Commission. I brought it up in our last steering committee meeting and brought that to their attention that we need to include that component, which which is actually required by DCA that we include that component. So it should be addressed in the five-year update to the comprehensive plan, but also during this downtown master plan, that's something that we can also include um in this plan.
All right, so um just to ensure that that is indeed um considered, uh it could uh we include language regarding um broadband and 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 how does this this uh master plan tie into the comprehensive, the five-year comprehensive plan?
Well, the the comprehensive plan is a twenty thirty-five, which is a twenty-year outlook as far as where the city goes in growth and development. And in the comprehensive plan, we have a character area, which is the town center mixed use where we address the development of downtown over that twenty-year period from twenty fifteen when it was adopted up until twenty thirty-five. So basically, all of these documents should be consistent and be uh coherent with each other. And so those one of the things that we will be again tackling in the five-year update is the broadband. And so the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan and this downtown master plan again should be consistent. And that's one of the things that we put in the RFP, the various um plans and studies that we have that the consultant would would be using to actually um create the downtown master plan. So they all should be consistent and speak the same language.
Okay, so that will be included then in the agreement um with ARC on the downtown master plan?
Yes, it'll actually be in the agreement with the consultant.
The consultant, okay, uh, to evaluate uh the need for and placement of broadband and whatever else needs to be included. Okay, thank you so much.
The, can I add this um last bit? The RFP has already been um put out, it was put out, published on, I think, August the fifth and it closed on September the first. So those items will be included in that and will be um discussed with the consultant once it's um so, once they're selected.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, again, I also would like to congratulate Ms. Peaks and her department in getting this outstanding, fantastic, well-needed for the City of Fairburn award from ARC. It is really outstanding and congratulations on all of your work and your department's work in um submitting for this award. But I do see in your comments and looking at the sub grant agreement that there's a discrepancy uh in reference to the completion date. Uh, you're saying that um you're scheduled to begin on November first, twenty-twenty with a completion date by December of one, twenty-twenty-one. And in the sub grant agreement, number three, it talks about time of performance. Uh, and it is stating that um in reference to attachment A, that all work and services required shall be completed on before October thirty-first, twenty-one. And in attachment B, it states that, you know, that you're on a uh deliverable type of timeline. So I think that completion date really need to uh be in sync.
That, well, um, can I, you you done out answer that question. Actually, the um number three on the first page, time of performance, that October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, that's actually will be corrected and revised to reflect December first of twenty-twenty-one. I got an email today from ARC because I um had a question about that because the dates that they gave us on our LCI kickoff call and what's in the contract was actually different. So he said, I actually, this was recycled and changed, so he will send me out a new contract in the morning with the December first, twenty-twenty-one date. So thank you for bringing that up. I was actually gonna um bring that up and it slipped my mind. So, yes, the date will change to December first, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Are there any more uh comments concerning um item number two? May I have a motion on the floor to uh approve?
So moved.
Motion made by
Councilwoman Davis.
Uh, motion made by Councilwoman Jones, Hattie Portis Jones, and seconded by Councilwoman Linda Davis. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six-zero. The next item on the agenda is uh Mr. Lester Thompson. Uh, Community Development for Mayor and Council to Approve the Malone Street Curb and Gutter Installation and Project Contract Award in the amount of forty-one thousand eight hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Purpose of this agenda item is for Mayor and Council to approve the Malone Street Curb and Gutter Installation Project Contract Award to Construction Fifty-Seven Incorporated. The budget impact will be forty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. The project expenditures will come out of the general fund street account expenditure line item um for sidewalk, street replacement and curb and gutter. Um, the invitation for bids were sent out on August the fifth, twenty-twenty. Five bids were received. After completion of the bid evaluation, it was determined that Construction Fifty-Seven was the lowest responsive and responsible bidder with a bid price of forty-one thousand eight hundred. As such, staff recommends Mayor and Council approve the contract award to Construction Fifty-Seven Incorporated at a bid price of forty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Thompson? Is there a motion on the floor to approve?
So moved, Mayor Proton. Well, second, uh, Mayor Proton Smallwood then.
Uh, is that motion made by Councilman Whitmore?
Yes, ma'am.
A motion made by Councilman Whitmore and seconded by Mayor Proton Smallwood. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six-zero. Uh, uh, Mr. Heath? Alex Heath, Councilman Heath? He's gone for a second. We'll come back to him. Uh, Councilman Heath?
Yes, ma'am.
This is that issue that we talked, that we've been talking about for the last couple of months.
Thank you so much.
You
Um, by the way, Mayor, for some reason or another, uh, I've muted myself when I, we we're in between things and then I can't unmute myself. So that that's where I was at.
Okay, but So your vote is yes?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so that's six-zero. Okay, uh, the next item on the agenda is item number four for Mayor and Council to approve the change order for the Howell Avenue Extension Project in the amount of fifty-eight fifty, five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Mr. Lester Thompson.
Yes, ma'am. The purpose of this agenda item is to approve um the proposed change order for the Howell Avenue Extension Project. Um, the budget impact will be five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Project expenditures will come out of the T-Slot Infrastructure Roadway Account. Um, during construction, drainage concerns were discovered in the field by the contractor um related to parcels five and six of the Howell Avenue Extension Project. To address the concerns, the contractor has proposed remediation efforts that include installation of catch basins and area drain and associated activities. The impacts um to property owners such as these are typically taken care of during um what we call the cost of cure process. However, in this case, remedies were captured during the project design and ultimately in the construction contract. Um, in doing so, uh, even with the approval of this proposed change order, the city, the City of Fairburn will save over forty-three thousand dollars of what have, would have been paid to the owner outright based on the original cost to cure value. As such, staff recommends that Mayor and Council approve the proposed change order for the Howell Avenue Extension Project for the quoted price of five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Any questions?
Yes, Mayor, um, Councilwoman Portis Jones?
Yes, Councilwoman Portis Jones.
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Thompson. Uh, well, um, congratulations on the the huge savings. That's fantastic. Could you just describe again, though, what's the mitigation or what was the problem that was discovered? And and what's the remedy?
Um, it was some drainage concerns. Um, the drainage was sloping back into um the property. It was going to flood um the building. So in order to curb that, they want to install some catch basins and and an inlet there to um divert the water away from the property owner.
Okay, and and where is it going? Is it going uh door in a creek or um an alleyway or so that we don't have any issues with the neighbor?
No, it's going to a catch basin on the on the roadway project itself.
Railway, okay, okay, fantastic. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Thompson concerning item number four? Okay, is there a motion on the floor to approve?
So moved, Councilman Heath.
Uh, motion made by Councilman Heath to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Councilwoman Davis.
Second by Councilwoman Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six-zero.
Thank you.
So much. Thank you, uh, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
Um, before we get to uh uh council comments for tonight, uh, is um Kalanis Johnson, are you on the line?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, would you give us a quick update uh concerning the next COVID nineteen testing here in the City of Fairburn?
Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
Yes ma'am, um good evening, I'm Honorable Mayor, fellow council members. We have coordinated in the past uh with the Fulton County Board of Health. We had a COVID nineteen testing on the uh twentieth of August, and it uh was fairly successful. We were able to get approximately two hundred and forty uh residents um tested. And this was a one-stop shop unlike the one we did back in July where Board of Health, they did um actual appointments in advance and so um much smoother process, very efficient. Um they liked, they enjoyed it, um they liked the facility, they liked everything we had laid out for them. So they uh mentioned the possibility of doing further uh testing. And as um Mr. Colbert mentioned earlier, you know, we are pretty high with some of our infection rates. So we decided to do two more testing events and they will be September the fourth, which is next Friday, as well as September the tenth, which is that following Thursday. It will take place at the Fairburn uh Education Campus, um three twenty Northwest Broad Street, and it will be from eight o'clock to two thirty. And as I mentioned, they are asking for appointments uh to make appointments in advance. Um and they're gonna stop intake, the last appointments will be taken at two P M. Um again, it went very smooth last time and um we again, we're gonna do it again and um who knows, um obviously if after the tenth, we may look at doing more and that's something I'll um I I'll also check with the mayor and leadership to see if you all are interested in continuing to do this as we get deeper into the fall. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Portis Jones?
Yes, Councilwoman Jones.
Uh yes, uh my question has to do with um the turnaround for results of the testing. Uh has that um the notification of the results uh have the number of days decreased?
That's uh, that's a great question ma'am. That was another reason why I think we are doing better by coordinating with the Fulton Board of Health. Um it's al- it's three to five business days. I personally got tested again, uh uh so it was on a Friday and I got my results back uh Monday afternoon. And we haven't had any reports, any residents calling uh to to the city uh inquiring about their results. Apparently, this went a lot smoother. Unfortunately, the one in July, um you know, that we didn't have this um that that success. But uh three to five days and again, um haven't been any complaints from the most recent one we had. So I think we should continue to coordinate with the Fulton Board of Health.
Okay, and then my second question, um probably the mayor needs to answer this and that is uh are there, uh is there a routine schedule for employees? Or are they um um testing when they decide um they need to test? Or uh or is there any mandatory testing uh on our part?
There is no mandatory testing on our part. Employees test when they feel the need to be tested.
Okay, um yes, alright, thank you so much.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. Would also like to add uh to this that Fulton County Board of Health also has a testing site that are, is turning around those tests uh within two days. Uh and it's out at the Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport. Uh I can get that information to you. I just found out about it uh this morning. I got a call about it. Uh it was supposed to end on August twenty-sixth, but it's my understanding that they're going to uh extend it to September the eleventh uh as of now. So that is another testing site, Fulton County Board of Health, and it's my understanding within forty-eight hours, those test results are coming back. Uh with that being said, um we'll go to uh council comments for tonight. And we'll start with uh Councilwoman Linda Davis.
Oh, thank you Mayor. I have no comments tonight.
Okay, uh Councilman Pat Powell?
No comment.
Uh Councilman Alex Heath?
No comment.
Uh Councilwoman Hattie Portis Jones?
No comments.
Uh Councilman uh James Whitmore?
Uh yes, Mayor. Uh my colleague alluded to this a little earlier, so I figured I'll use my closing comments to address it. My last council meeting, August tenth, twenty twenty, my colleague made reference to my comments and reference to the tax amendment for safeguard. Uh so I would like to say for the record, while all elected officials may be lobbied by companies, there was no difference in what I did to correct the record based upon an email received by that company. Uh I did nothing wrong. One second, let me get that over here. I did nothing wrong and I had no obligation to disclose any information to council. However, as a courtesy, I did and I did that for the record. Again, to my colleagues, I do apologize for the way that information was received by some, but my integrity is intact. Hopefully in the future, such tone will not be displayed towards myself or any other elected official. I think that uh we know what the politics one oh one is and by the tone that that was delivered, uh it was not appreciated. And hopefully moving forward, we will not have that tone displayed uh in any of our council meetings. And with that, Mayor, I close my comments.
Oh.
Oh, just one other thing, Mayor.
Yeah.
I did have a legal opinion provided by our attorneys. And in that legal opinion, it did state that there was no wrongdoing. And it also stated that as an elected official, as we all have been courted or uh called by various people for various things. And the one thing that I have been consistent with since been, since I have been an elected official is I always went back to staff to ask what was going on and then directed the applicant, for whatever the reason, to follow up with staff and follow their recommendations. And with that, Mayor, I do close.
Uh, thank you Councilman uh Whitmore. And last but not least is the Mayor Protem, Yelissa Smallwood.
I don't have anything this evening, just good evening. Thank you everybody for coming out. Well, tuning in, I should say.
For tuning in, great. Uh I have one announcement to make and uh uh it's it's very, very good news. Uh the city of Fairburn and uh Tariqa, you still on? Ms. Peaks, are you still on? Okay. Okay, uh unmute yourself so you can chime in. Uh the city of Fairburn has been awarded a, well, two, two C D B G grants. One in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh and that grant is going to go for us to renovate the Fairburn Annex uh for COVID testing, education, and also for us to acquire property to uh handle the overflow parking at the Annex if that uh if 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 we uh we need to. So that's a two hundred thousand dollar grant. Uh we're going to accept the grant on tomorrow and probably within the next four to five weeks, we should have that checked in. Uh we have another fifty thousand dollar uh COVID uh uh grant that's coming from the Department of, uh Fulton County Department of Community Development. And um that fifty thousand dollars is for the city of Fairburn to purchase P P E equipment for first responders. Um also provide park improvements and uh per- purchase uh COVID prevention toolkit for Fulton County Public uh School students and to provide food for our seniors. That's another fifty thousand dollars. So uh Tariqa, did you want to piggyback on any of that? We're very happy to be receiving a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant uh from Fulton County for C D B G.
Only thing I add, ma'am, I think you summed it all up, but the only thing I will add, um I think we have a great team um between Lester, myself, Sylvia Abernathy, the Main Street Manager, and Kalanis Johnson, the Economic Development Manager. Um we put together that grant application in a barely short notice. And so to hear that we was awarded is great. And actually Lester Thompson is the C D B G master. He basically handles and managed all of the city's um C D B G funds and C D B projects. So um kudos to Lester, Sylvia Abernathy, and um Kalanis Johnson because we all rallied together to get that application submitted to Fulton County in a short timeframe. And so um I just say kudos to my colleagues.
Thank you. For everyone who uh participated in the uh writing of this grant, you're 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 correct. Uh I think we did this grant in less than a week.
Yes.
Uh, yes, we did. And uh to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh i- is great. So thank you all. Thank you staff so much. And with that, there's no-
Mayor, 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 this is Councilwoman Davis. I'm I'm sorry. Um I wanted to ask you a question. Speaking of Fulton County, I think I read something in um Commissioner's uh Karn's uh report that we're getting that Fulton County is getting up off some money and we're getting some money in in about four hundred and some odd thousand dollars. I don't know, I could be off, I'm too going from memory. Is that true?
Uh yeah, that's uh Fulton County uh Commissioners have a meeting on last week and um it's about fifteen million dollars that's going to be distributed uh um uh between the cities. And right now, it looks like our share is going to be roughly about four hundred and some thousand dollars.
Great.
Yes, uh and we'll see, you know, uh wait until the check gets in the hands before we we start jumping up, uh Councilwoman Davis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's good news though.
Yes, but I I just want to make sure, did everybody receive that email from uh Commissioner Karns?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, good.
Mayor, I have a one question regarding budgets.
Yes.
Uh well, I just wanted to confirm the schedule. Uh I didn't see the notice in the paper regarding uh the the public hearing for budgets, so I just will need to confirm the schedule.
Uh you'll need to get with the city clerk on tomorrow. I don't have the schedule before me, but I know the city clerk uh will be uh putting an ad uh uh on tomorrow that's going to run uh for next week, I believe. Is that right? Uh Erica?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, so we will be finalizing the ad on tomorrow?
Okay, um-
It will run on September third.
It'll run on September third for notice, which date, the public hearing date?
Uh September the fourteenth.
September four, okay, alright, um thank you. And then um just one other question regarding budget, Mayor, and that is um um I also uh saw in the paper regarding uh the delay in getting the tax digest uh that that will impact our ability to um um de- to develop our um our our millage. You do, do you anticipate?
We're working on that right now. Uh the first thing I did this morning was was get with my tax guy, um Mr. Rose, and uh he's trying to get some information from Fulton County. The information that's been put out there is kind of mumble jumbo, nobody is knowing anything. And so nothing is concrete right now. And so uh he was supposed to get some calls back this afternoon because we we have to make a decision uh on that millage and uh we're waiting to see what Fulton County is going to do. Uh right now, they cannot give us a concrete answer, even though word got out uh uh that it is going to be delayed. Uh but they are telling us uh right now, they don't know. So I don't have a definitive answer for you until we get something from Fulton County. Hopefully, it's gonna be uh sometime tomorrow.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, uh with that, um there's there's no executive session on tonight. Um may I have uh uh Mr. Turner, did you have anything you wanted to say to council tonight?
Uh no, I'm fine. I thank you so much and uh I I'm sort of horrified to be standing here wearing a a polo shirt on your uh city council meeting tonight, but uh and you all saw our, saw our email. We're in the middle of a of a move, we're in office and it looks like things are proceeding pretty well and I appreciate uh everyone's uh patience with us as we work through all this, all these details. I'm sitting at a card table right now in my office. I hope you all have a great night. Thank you.
Okay.
Get some rest. I'm sorry.
That's okay. With that being said, may I have a motion on the floor to adjourn, please?
So move, Councilman Heath.
Second, Councilwoman Davis.
Uh motion to adjourn made by Councilman Heath and seconded by Councilwoman Davis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries six to zero. We are now adjourned. Everybody have a safe week.
Good night.